We're good to go. Okay. Well, good evening, and I'm going to call to order our regular meeting of the Bemidji School Board, and it is Monday evening, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty P. M. First item on our agenda is to approve this evening's agenda. Motion needed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Any requests to remove a topic from the consent agenda this evening? Okay. Then motion needed to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is special topics. Superintendent Olson.
Thank you. So we're going to be talking about the Lincoln Gardens here, and here to present is Ms. Johnson and Mr. Lusick.
Good, good evening, and thank you for letting us share a little bit about our school garden. I believe there's a couple of pictures that will be coming up. All right. So to give you a little bit of a history on the school garden that we've had at Lincoln Elementary, we used to partner with the University of Minnesota Extension Service, and that was a good program to get us started and kind of our feet on the ground, start building the garden. But in the last few years, Gina Johnson, who is standing next to me, has been doing a very good job of making sure that we're expanding that garden, and she's done that in a couple of different ways. She's done a lot of additional work outside of school, so it's not only during the school day, but she's also done some work at the garden itself outside of school hours, which has really expanded and supported our garden. When you look at the garden itself, you can see that this is a fairly wide picture of it. We've expanded quite a few garden boxes that have made it possible for more items to be raised in the gardens, and they are raised beds, if you can kind of see there. Maybe this shows a little bit more. We've also put some fencing over so that we can have beans that are grown throughout the year, and I'll let Gina share a little bit more about that. But she's done a lot of work to make sure that that garden has been successful. And the biggest thing that I've seen that is really why we have school gardens in our, at our school community is getting students involved. So she's been able to get students involved during the summer. Obviously, in Minnesota, you don't grow a lot of things during the school year because they just don't grow because of winter, but she's been able to expand that program. There are a lot of students that come every Wednesday and enjoy time in the gardens and working with the gardens and working with Ms. Gina, but they also bring their parents with, and that's been the best part about the program that I've seen, is that a lot of parents are populating our school garden community area during that time that she works with them on Wednesdays during the summer. She's also been able to bring a lot of food that we normally wouldn't serve in the cafeteria to the table. So the food that she's brought to the table has been very successful. You can see a few students here helping with the harvesting. We have some radishes and carrots, and usually when you think about carrots, you think about an orange carrot. We have multicolored carrots, so the kids get into that quite a bit because they see a purple carrot or a white carrot. The radishes, we've, we've struggled a little bit. I ate a lot of them, but the students had a little bit of harder time eating as many off the salad bar that we have. You can see some of the other vegetables and food that we were able to share with the students as well during the school year. And on the right-hand side, there is a picture of the beans, and I'll let Gina talk about those a little bit more once I turn it over to her. Couple other pictures. She might be able to explain some of the different fruits that are and vegetables that are here. Let her go back through them. The one on the right is potatoes, so we do have a later crop of those that she's making sure survive through the cold temps these last couple of days. You can also see that there are flowers that are pollinator flowers as well as edible flowers that we can eat as well during the school year. So the next part, as, as I'm here to give a spotlight on the Lincoln School Garden, I also want to spotlight Ms. Gina Johnson because without her support and her work, we wouldn't have that beautiful garden that you see or saw in the picture. She has done a very good job of making sure to reach out to those students and families that aren't always students that make it to our front door on a daily basis. So we really appreciate what she's done, and we want to recognize that as well as the school garden. Thank you.
As Jason's mentioned, I started doing the garden last summer and again the summer before that. It was kind of a unexpected invite to that. I had talked about doing my own garden at home, and Jason and Sonia teamed up on me, and they were like, "So, would you like to do the garden? Really, we want you to do the garden. You're doing the garden, right?" So here I am, in front of all you folks today, talking about our Lincoln Garden. It is one of my passions. I love growing things. I love sharing that with kids and with others. When we started the Lincoln Garden, we had some basic ideas of what we were going to grow there. We did, you know, those things that everybody grows in their garden. We had cucumbers, and we had tomatoes, and we had lettuce. We had beans, and we had potatoes, but there are also some things that we grew that are unusual, that the kids have not generally had exposure to, things like a ground cherry, which is something kind of like a tomateo. It's a small little fruit that's covered in a paper husk, and when it ripens, it drops off of the plant on its own. When you eat it, it has a very similar taste to, almost like a cross between a tomato and a pineapple. It's very sweet. It has an unusual flavor, and usually the kids really enjoy it once they get past how different it looks. Some other things that we do in the garden, even though they have probably had a tomato, they've probably never eaten a red tomato. So I like to do something that they're familiar with. So it's a red cherry tomato, but I also grow orange cherry tomatoes. We grew the rainbow carrots so that they can see that they come in more than just one color. The same thing with like our zucchini. We have green zucchini. We have yellow zucchini. We have two colors of potatoes, two colors of peas. We did a green snap pea or snow pea, and we also did a yellow one so that they could experience not only a fresh vegetable out of the garden that they may have had before, but a new color or a new slightly different flavor than they've had. We also introduced some to things like edible flowers, things like nasturtiums that taste like radishes. We also do herbs. We did, this year we did chamomile, we did dill, and we did basil. And the kids get to try all of these in the garden. So we're introducing them to herbs that are things that they haven't necessarily had, and let me tell you, dill is a big one. They love the dill, and they often tell me that it smells like pickles, so then that leads to a conversation about how pickles get their flavor and what a pickle is, that it's a cucumber that you've used this herb on. So the kids really enjoy it. They do come to me, even now during the school year. We have a few things left that, like our beans. It's an old variety that was gifted to me by a friend of mine. It's called a Hopi bean. It's a parent variety to a Scarlet Runner, for those of you that are gardeners and are familiar. And it's a large bean, like you could see it in my hand there, and it's very beautiful. It's that dark, almost black purple that fades into the lighter purple, kind of speckles. And the kids help me harvest those in the fall. We'll be doing that next week, actually. And our potatoes are in buckets so that it's easy for us to pick. And so all of those things, those are the last few things that we have left in our garden this year to do. And the kids are asking me nearly daily, "Ms. Gina, is today the day? Do we get to pick them today?" Nope, not yet. Hold on. So, but it does, it does promote an awareness of where their food comes from, and it also gets them excited about what they're eating. And I've seen kids in our lunchroom try something because someone tells them that it came out of the Lincoln Garden. Our program has doubled in the two years that we've had it. The first year I had twenty, twenty-two students that signed up for the program. This year, in May, we had forty-three. Throughout the summer, that kind of fluctuates a little bit, you know, from day to day. When they come in on Wednesdays, I had split them into two groups because having forty-three K through three, our third graders, in a garden our size is just not very manageable. But we split them into two groups. They come every other week. Everybody gets to try the same thing, so I'm doing that same activity two weeks in a row. So if we're picking peas, then everybody gets to pick peas. If we're planting something, then everybody gets to do the planting. I'm very conscious about letting all of the kids try everything. If you want to eat it, eat it. And we talk about edible weeds even, some of those things that we don't necessarily, in America, grow as a food crop, but in other countries, we do, like perslane. It has, it's a salad green essentially, but it's a weed here. But the kids will fight over it when they find it in our garden. "Oh, hey, it's the one we can eat. I want to have one. Can I have a leaf?" And so there they are, like taking these little tiny leaves off of this weed that's only this tall. So they're very excited, and it's a fantastic thing to see them so excited about where their food comes from. Did you guys have any questions for me?
Can you do a garden at each of the elementary schools?
I think they'd have to rearrange what my job title is for something like that. I think part of the reason I have such great engagement at the Lincoln Garden is because they see me day to day in the school. They know me. I'm a familiar face. I feel like if I weren't part of the Lincoln School atmosphere and climate, that they wouldn't, they wouldn't sign up in the same way that they do. They wouldn't have those opportunities to form those close connections with me and see me out on their playground and see me in the cafeteria in the morning and walking through the halls and in their classrooms every day. So I think that that is one of the reasons that our program has grown so quickly and has been so successful.
Well, thank you for what you do. You are another example of, another one of the right things that's happening, the good things that are happening in this school district. Thanks for your good work.
I will, oh, I was going to say, I'm going to echo that, of course. What a wonderful program, and thank you so much for your effort. Appreciate it. And you just brought back a childhood memory for me, talking about ground cherries. That was something that, that I grew up with that, and my mom would make sauce. So it is a fruit that not many people know about, but when you described it, I went, "Oh, I remember having those as a kid," so. And they are different, but they are good.
Once we, we started serving them on our salad bar, so during the summertime, the kids get to take the produce home. And then once school comes back in session, then anything that we harvest from the garden is actually served in our cafeteria in the lunchroom. So the ground cherries are one of those things, and it was kind of interesting to see how the, the ground cherries weren't very often selected, except by the garden club kids at first, but then when they would encourage their friends to try them, it was almost impossible to keep any on the salad bar. It would just, they were gone. All the kids really enjoyed them.
Good. Well, thank you. Thanks so much. Next item on our agenda is student representative report, and we're really pleased this evening to welcome one of our new student representatives, Holly Vind. And we would just had such a wonderful experience interviewing Holly, and just knew she'd be a good fit for the board. So we welcome you tonight, and I'd like you to just share a little bit about yourself, and then you can give us your report. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm very excited for what this school board brings to the community and excited to work alongside you guys this year. My name is Holly Vind. I am a senior at the high school. I am involved in marching band and the band programs at the high school. Tonight, I'd like to share a little bit about some of the things that are happening in the high school. On October twenty-seventh, we have our academic awards, which are, which is an award ceremony for those who have lettered in academics, which is a great accomplishment. Our fall sports are starting to wind down. A few of our teams have the option to go to sections this year, which is very exciting. Their hard work and dedication has been shown both on and off the fields. Levote Ballo and Volcomotive, which are our show choir groups, have started up along with the musical. This year, it is Little Shop of Horrors, a great musical, definitely a lot of fun for the family, so I encourage everybody to get out and see that in November. And I'm excited to see all of their performances this year. Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to having you with us at our upcoming meetings. And our second student representative is Nick Radio, and he was unable to be with us tonight. He's part of the soccer team, which is doing so well, so they had like an extra practice this evening. So he's at soccer practice, so we'll look forward to welcoming Nick at our November meeting, so. Next item on our agenda is listening session review, and we had no one who came to listening session this evening, so we will move on. Next item is donations, and I believe we don't have any donations this evening. So next item under equitable student achievement is the field trip request for the Bemidji High School Choir, March eighth through the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Superintendent Olson.
Thank you. So we have a field trip request right now for our high school choir to travel to New York City from March eighth to the twelfth in two thousand and twenty-three. The cost is approximately seventeen hundred dollars per student, and fundraising activities are available in page sixty-four of your packet. There is some specific information on that trip, and so because of the nature of this trip, we would need board approval to initiate this. And both myself and the high school principal are both recommending this after looking at policy and so forth.
All right, motion needed.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a couple of questions, or one question. The, the money for it is being done through fundraising, or is it being supported through our, our funds as well?
So the responsibilities will be to the student, so there's seventeen hundred dollars total class, is my understanding. There is availability for fundraising, so it would be seventeen hundred dollars then minus whatever fundraising activities happen.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, under relationships and collaboration, is a Bemidji Career Academy Career Fair report from Dr. Jason Stannich.
Good evening. I'm just going to introduce that we are going to give a little update on the academies. We've had some changes in the last six months. For those who don't know me, I'm Jason Stannich, high school principal, and also assume the mantle of a career academies director. But behind me, I, we really have the heart and soul of the academies, and so I'm going to let them introduce themselves and give an update. We've got a short presentation for you. So I will step aside.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, I am Jenny Fraley. I'm the coordinator for the Career Academy program. We had a couple of things. I think you can see it there, correct? Okay. So just as a quick refresher and reminder, for those of you who may not know, the academies are really a career pathway package for students to explore different careers at the high school level. They include current high school courses that we have already offered. They include a student and industry partner connection, some post-secondary courses, and then work within the, within the Greater Bemidji workforce. So our mission is to create hands-on, relevant learning opportunities for students in career fields that are in our area, and our vision really is for every student to succeed and thrive within our community. So we have fifteen different career academies that are here because of the industry in our area. So if you'll notice, on all fifteen of these, you can probably imagine the name of a company or someone you know who works in one of these fields. When I get to the numbers, I'll kind of explain which ones are our highest ones, but you'll notice four of them are split into different tracks, so we actually have twenty-two career pathways within those fifteen academies. Our focus areas this year are on student engagement. We're still slowly coming back from COVID, so we're still trying to get students out into the community and engaged in exploring in a meaningful way on continuing to develop our different academies so that they are relevant to those industries and to continue our wonderful partner connections. We're so incredibly thankful to them. We could not do this program without them, and so we want to continue working with them to make sure that what we're doing is helping them as well. So for our participation currently, we're at six hundred individual students with over, right around a thousand enrollments. So that means you have six hundred students who are enrolled in one or more academies. Our highest numbers of enrollments are in healthcare, in the trades, art and design, childcare, and in business. So again, if you think of our community and you think of the needs that we're seeing and then the numbers that students are interested in, that's really encouraging to me because it means that there are students who are interested in filling some of those employment gaps that we have, and we're hoping to help get them connected. We currently have a hundred and forty-four individual seniors who are enrolled in the academies, which is also really exciting because they'll be graduating in a short time here and going out into the workforce. So our hope is to help them with that. And then we have some real-world experiences that we help students connect with. We partner with Exploring Program and another program called Youth Skills Training that we have over a hundred and twenty students participating in those. So we kickstarted our year with our career fair, and that was on September nineteenth. We invite our partners. We had fifty-five this year who were able to come, and they really do a great job of interacting with the students, giving them some hands-on learning experiences. You can see there, there's a welding simulator. It's inside and outside. The kids had a blast. It was a beautiful day. There was no rain or snow, which we were really excited about. And this is really a way to get the kids interested in exploring as they go about their school year. So we hold it typically in the fall for that purpose. Just a couple more fun pictures. Yeah, it's a blast. The kids really enjoy it, and so do our partners. So really, the bread and butter of our program, which will continue to be so this year, are our real-world experiences. We have three options. If a student's going to complete in a academy, they need to complete the required coursework, some work seminar, work skills training, as well as a real-world experience. So we like to try to connect them with those experiences in one of three ways. We have our partnership with the Boy Scouts, with the Exploring Program. We have the Youth Skills Training Program, which provides paid internships. And then we continue to offer those individual job shadows and those kinds of things. So I'm going to let Brad Olson, he is the Scout Executive and C. E. O., to explain a little bit about what the Exploring Program is.
Thanks, Jenny. Like Jenny said, my name is Brad. I work for the Boy Scouts of America here. Most people know what Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts are, our main programs. One of them is Exploring, and it's a hands-on experience for students ages fourteen to twenty to really see what it's like to, to get into a different work field. For instance, tonight was our first meeting at Pinnacle Marketing tonight. That's one of our twenty-some partners that we have here in the community where the kids got a tour tonight and to kind of see what it's like to peel back the layers and decide, is that a career field that I really want to go into before they get to whatever post-secondary school may look like for them and get those experiences. It's also great for our businesses to be able to see those students and interact with them now and hopefully to be able to retain people in our community. We have lots of great paying jobs here in this community here, and people don't need to leave here. You know, I look at Todd or whatever right now, too. We have one with the radio station here as well as one of our other many programs we have. The really nice thing about partnering with the Boy Scouts of America in this program is that we provide all of the liability insurance for all of our businesses that partner with us and also accident and sickness insurance. So it's nothing, so if somebody does happen to get hurt, God forbid, we don't want that to happen, but it's not on the school or whatever, the school board in, in the school district. It's, the Scouts will take care of all that stuff. So it's a nationwide program as well, and so there's lesson plans. There's all these resources that are already available. There's people that are doing this across the country, and so it's not like we're trying to recreate any kind of wheel as we work with these different businesses. And you can see there's pictures of some of our different groups there that are kind of scrolling across the screen. We've got everything from construction to healthcare to law enforcement. Aviation. I know last year, the kids actually got to go apply over Bemidji as the kind of pinnacle part of the end of the year for the kids in aviation to everything with like Hills Country Greenhouse. I learned last year- like Hills Country Greenhouse. I learned last year how to, that I was not watering plants properly. So, but I learned how to properly do that now after going to one of those sessions. So, but again, we continue to keep giving the students the opportunities to really explore and find out, is that something I want to go into, or maybe that's not the correct career path for me, and they can go into something else before they get to whatever post-secondary school is. So, thanks.
Thanks, Brad. Brad came to us about five years ago and said, hey, you're kind of doing the same thing I am. Let's work together. And it's been a wonderful partnership. You can see here, there's just a couple more pictures. Again, this is for students ages 14 through the age of 20. So all of our students at the high school are able to participate this, in this. There is a fee associated with it, but because of our wonderful sponsors and donors, we're able to cover that for the students, because that financial barrier is one we don't want to exist for our students. We have so many pictures. If you ever want more, just send me an email. The second thing that we offer is through a grant program that we have, but it's called the Youth Skills Training Program, and this is a program that focuses on five areas of agriculture, auto, IT, health, and manufacturing. And this is through the Department of Labor and Industry in the state. Through this program, we are able to get industries in our area approved to have paid interns at their locations, ages 16, 17, and 18. And that means there's even some equipment that perhaps they wouldn't have been approved to use outside of this program when they were 16 and 17, but because it's through this program, we have 16- and 17-year-olds who are able to go out. They're getting paid the same wage as anyone else and being able to intern and check out jobs along with the Exploring Program being an opportunity for them. So these are our approved paid internship programs. We're working on a couple others, but this has just been a really exciting thing for a lot of our students. Couple pictures just of folks out on the floor in some of our internships. We continue to offer individual experiences. So this, again, we have an office located in the high school, and if a student walks through our doors and says, hey, I'm really interested in becoming a chiropractor, can you connect me with a partner in the community? We're able to, thanks to the graciousness of all of the business partners in our community who are willing to open their doors, we're able to connect them with that experience and kind of be a one-stop shop for students who are looking for that hands-on experience. A couple pictures. An example of this was Northern Vet up on Irvin Avenue just opened their doors. Within the last couple of years, we were able to get in touch with them and said, hey, we've got students who are interested in becoming veterinarians. They said, send them on over. They can watch surgeries. I would never want to do that, but these kids love doing that. So they go and sit at the clinic for half a day and get to observe what it's like. So we continue to do that. We continue to take some exploratory field trips. We just did one up to Big Bog last Friday. Some other things that we're continuing is our nursing assistant students get credit through NTC from their class at the high school. We also are pursuing, you know, other possibilities there with NTC. Our students can get Mechatronics certification, so industry credentials, through MI2. We also had students get articulated credit in HVAC. We continue to have virtual and in-person interviews. We have CEO in the classroom, all that kind of stuff, and we are going to continue hosting that Career Fair. So these are just a couple pictures of some of the field trips we did. Last spring, we went down to Camp Ripley, which was amazing. And here's some of our nursing assistant graduates and our Mechatronics students. And so this is fun. Every term we have these, we get to go out and celebrate them. And one thing, too, I wanted to mention, if you are ever interested in coming to one of our Exploring posts or one of these celebrations, please feel free to reach out and let us know. We'd love to have you, even if it's for half an hour or something like that. It's really hard to describe unless you're there and you're seeing and learning along with them. It's pretty cool. So since 2017, we've had over 100 students intern, job shadow, or become employed in all of these businesses in town. And again, I cannot express enough how grateful we are to our community for opening their doors to our students, for supporting us. This is really, it's a really cool thing. I was a student here, and I wish I would have had this when I was here. I think it would have been a great asset to my journey. So, last but not least, in the spring, when our students complete their academies, they get to earn that certificate and that medallion at graduation. You can see the young lady there. She had, I think she did six of them last year. So she went hardcore. She was all about exploring different careers. We were so really proud of her. And then we do have our Adopt a Highway Mile over by Animal Land that we go out and clean up every spring. So if you have any questions, or you'd like to come along, you can definitely contact any one of us. If you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer.
I just want to say thank you for your work on this. I think it's important that our students have opportunities. I think in the past, we've looked at, you know, this college. That's where we want everyone to go. And there are so many other opportunities out there with good-paying jobs that I think in the past, maybe have gotten lost. And this helps keep those things active and alive. So thank you for your work you're doing on it.
Thank you. Yep, I completely agree. Thank you for that.
Jenny, was participation in your program up to 2019, was it growing each year? I'm sure the COVID years were a bit off.
Yeah, it actually has stayed pretty level with COVID. It was, it's been growing each year. Part of that is we've added, up to 2019, we added academies each year. We've had the same amount for the last three years. And then these are just the numbers that are starting in the fall, and they always end with more in the spring as we go along. So I would say, you know, even with COVID, we didn't really see a drop at all, because students were still thinking, what can I do? You know, what can I get skilled at? What can I be learning while I'm still at home? So.
I, too, want to thank you, because this has been great. Both my kids have dabbled in the career academies and have learned a great deal. One of the things, as a career person myself, that I think is super important is not only do they kind of find out what they may like, but they also find out what they may not like. And that is just as important, to follow something early on and realize, oh, you know, this is not exactly what I thought it was. Maybe I need to try something else. That's super important. So I'm so glad that you guys are doing that. Great job.
Yeah, I agree. We've had a couple of interactions with fake blood at some simulations that have been eye-opening for some of our students.
Thank you for keeping this program alive and growing for our students, and I never like to miss an opportunity to thank our community, our stakeholders, our businesses who support Bemidji Area Schools and support our students on every level. And this is just another example of how they open their doors to help our students. And we're just so grateful to our community for the support for Bemidji Area Schools and all the wonderful things that happen in our schools. So thank you for that. And also at graduation, it is really fun to watch all of the graduates come in, and they're wearing their medallions, and each of the lanyards are a different color according to the career that they are involved in. And as you said, that one young lady who had five or six medals, I believe, but to see them marching in, and so many of the graduates, would you say 140-something this year?
We have 144 students in the program this year.
Right, right now. So that's a good chunk of our senior class. So again, it's just a wonderful program, and thank you, and thank you, Brad. Thank you, Dr. Stannich. So, thanks. Great team, great effort. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, from the educational standpoint, you know, we're always talking about how to make high school relevant, right? So we've all seen that before, where we question sometimes the relevancy of high school, and then that's something that we've debated in educational circles for quite some time. What a way to make high school relevant to students. I mean, to allow students to connect with their passions. So I'm very excited about this program, and I'm excited to see where you guys are going to take us. So, thank you.
As I mentioned, you can find our contact info and let us know if you can join us. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda, under High Quality District, is the Class Size Report. Superintendent Olson.
So per school policy, we are to report as administration our class sizes. I have already issued a communication to you with the class sizes, what that looks like, and so forth. But I wanted to, in the board meeting, talk through a couple of different things on average class sizes. I think that's important to note. So right now, and all the information can be found on page 65 as well, in your board packet. Our K3 students, our K3 schools, our average class size is 19.7. At the fourth and fifth grade level, it's 26 students. At the sixth through eighth grade level, it's 28.5 students, and then the average class size for 912 is 27.7. So just wanted to share that with you. Our K3 numbers are looking really, really good from a class-size perspective. And obviously, we generally do see in schools that increase over time. As students get older, we do see they're running larger class sizes. So I wanted to make sure that I presented this to you, because that is something that I'm obligated to do per policy. I have given you a list as well of any high school classes that are over the designated amount in policy, but I also wanted to highlight where we were with our average class sizes by age group.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Moving on, next item on our agenda is Staffing of Positions. Mr. Hickman?
Thank you, Chair members of the board. At the April 18th meeting of the school board, action was taken to release Tyler Johnson effective at the end of last school year. This action was taken due to the expiration of a temporary license. However, the vacancy continued to exist for a teacher in business education and work-based learning at Bemidji High School. Mr. and Ms. Johnson reapplied and has been offered that position. So we're recommending that the board rescind the termination of Tyler Johnson and rehire Tyler at this time.
Thank you. So we need someone to introduce this resolution, so I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? So this is a resolution, so this will be a roll call managed by Chris. Lind?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Haugen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Assurance of Compliance with State and Federal Laws Prohibiting Discrimination. Mr. Hickman?
Thank you, Chair members of the board. Annually, all school districts are required by the Minnesota Department of Education to complete and submit an assurance of compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination. The deadline for submission is November 15th. This is an informational item to inform the board that the report has been completed and submitted online as required, and we are well in advance of the November 15th deadline.
Thank you. Any questions? Next item on our agenda is First Reading of Revised SBR 700-10-1: Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. Superintendent Olson.
Thank you. So we are looking to amend a policy, so we're doing our first reading here, to comply with current statute. And so as we reviewed our policy, there was a section within the policy that did not reflect statute, and obviously statute does supersede policy. So we're making our policy, or we're suggesting that our policy be aligned with our current statute for the enrollment of non-resident students.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no items under Workforce Development this evening, so we'll move right on to upcoming events. Superintendent Olson.
Well, we have a couple of fun events in the future here, so I wanted to update you on those. JW Smith is having a trunk retreat on October 27th. Lincoln Elementary School is having a Fall Family Festival on October 28th. Bemidji Middle School, the Delta Pod Reward Day and School Dance is October 28th. Again, middle school, school dances, always a fun, fun topic here. Gene Dillon has Turkey Bingo November 21st and 22nd, and then the next school board meeting is November 21st at 6:30.
Okay, and I want to add just one other item, and that is next Monday evening, board, we have a special meeting at 5:00 PM, and that is our superintendent search follow-up. So this is something that is part of MSBA's process that we went through when we did our superintendent search last spring. So this was scheduled, so this will be with Barb Dorn from MSBA. This will be a Zoom meeting for the board. And I want to thank the staff for your input into the superintendent search and community. This is a very public process, and thanks to all those who came to all of our sessions and gave input from the community who were interested enough to come and do that. That was great. And so now this is just the end of that superintendent process. So again, that's Monday night at 5 o'clock. It's a Zoom meeting with MSBA Barb Dorn. Okay, thank you. And next item on our agenda, Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you. We are, have several things that I wanted to bring you up to speed on. First of all, one of the school board goals was to rebuilding enrollment. And so we have formed an enrollment committee, which has met twice now. We've studied enrollment trends within the district from, and used data from 2000 to present to study the trends in enrollment, and to start developing strategies for how we're going to rebuild enrollment. We'll be bringing those back to the school board once those are developed. But again, this is a strategic move to look at our, study our enrollment first of all, but then start designing strategies to rebuild it per the board goal. We are happy to report that enrollment has stabilized this year. We are on track from where we were last year, but again, the goal continues to be to rebuild our enrollment as a district, because that also impacts us financially, as we all know. Strategic planning, we have next school board meeting, in November's school board meeting, we'll be hearing from MSBA on the strategic planning process that is scheduled for this spring. Compensatory aid, I want to just report back to you on that as well, so that we did a concerted effort, a push with our, with our community, and we asked and called out to our community for help in approving or filling out free reduced lunch applications. And we're very happy to report that that effort, those efforts were fruitful. We are seeing about a $1.1 million increase for next year's budget because of the compensatory revenue that is based on this year's education benefits that were filled out this fall. So I'm very happy to report that to the board. That's going to help us with our fiscal deficit for the following budget year. Enhanced school security, that was, again, another board goal. This year, we have provided in securing of our school sites, the entrances, locking those doors. We're also embarking on fusing our emergency response protocols in an app known as Crisis Go, to just to notify people, staff within the building. And then we're also working on some of our planning processes as well. From a teaching and learning perspective, we're embarking on a process to adopt Marzano's work on school improvement, and that's work that's being led by our Teaching and Learning Department, Dr. Clem Department. We also have community education. The, our Kids and Company was able to terminate the waitlist. We no longer have a waitlist, which has been quite a while since we've normally have a waitlist, and so they're very proud that we've been able to eliminate that, and to get kids into programming, which is always important. At our elementary schools, JW Smith is working to get the Reading Core and Foster Grandparent Program started back up. And then Horace May also held a color run on September 10th, and then a Husky Assembly. So a lot of good things happening within our school system. I also want to congratulate Lumberjack Soccer, Football, and Volleyball, who all have successful games Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So that was exciting to see. And then a congrats to the BHS Broadcast students, who actually helped with broadcasting the October 3rd Bemidji Symphony Orchestra Concert. So when we talk about, again, making high school relevant, that those are real-world So when we talk about again, making high school relevant, that those are real world experiences that our kids are getting. So we was excited to report on that. And then of course, Bemidji High School had a successful homecoming, which is always exciting. And so a lot of, a lot of positive things coming out of our schools right now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next item is Once Around the Table Cabinet. Anything to add? Okay, Holly, anything else to add? Okay, then we'll go to Sarah.
First, I want to welcome you to the table. I'm so excited to have students back at the table. So let's welcome back. Then I wanted to talk a little bit about, everybody's talking about the election and the surplus that Minnesota might be seeing as the legislature starts up again. And I want to remind everyone to do their research about what they care about. And hopefully, if you're here and listening, you care about education. MREA, which is the Minnesota Rural Ed Association, they just put out, they completed a study that may help everyone see how money affects districts. Specifically, they were looking at whether the 1% increase in the per pupil formula would be more, less, or the same as providing that same money to special education cross subsidy. Okay? And so what they found when they did the research for us, and I have a cool little map that of course people can't see, but it's really color coded. So red, red means that you were more for the 1% money. And the yellow means that you'd do better if you got money towards the cross subsidy. And Bemidji is definitely in the yellow. And so the data shows that small rural schools do better with an increase in the basic formula, the basic 1%. And so what you're going to hear people talking about are rural schools do better if they get per pupil formula. Okay? And when I first heard that, I was like, oh, so Bemidji will do better if I get more on the on the per pupil formula. But that's not necessarily true. We consider ourselves small rural, but we are bigger than our comparables. Okay? And so when they looked at that, they found that the smaller the average school size, the more favorable the 1% increase was to the basic formula. But school districts like Bemidji, who consider themselves small, but they're actually larger in comparison, the money towards the special education cross subsidy would be more beneficial. Okay? So I know the last time we got together and talked about this, I had touched on this. And I just wanted to reiterate it again, as people are thinking about this and talking to their legislatures or listening to the ads, make sure you're thinking about how it would affect Bemidji. So and this is on the MREA, Minnesota, let's see now, I gotta look at it again. Minnesota Rural Education Association. And you can look at the colorful map or you could email me. And I'm sure I could get it out to you if you were really interested in seeing the article because it was a surprise to me. So that also being said, I want to give a shout out then for voting in the elections that are coming up. Because it really does matter when you're looking either locally or broadly. Education, if education's important to you, you need to look to see who's talking about it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Carol. I just want to add to Jeremy's list of teams that had a great fall season. The Lumberjack Tennis Team had another great season. And the Coach Fadness seems to build a terrific team each and every year. And that's, you know, you got some good kids that move through and they, but it seems like we always have good kids coming up. And to me, that says Coach Fadness is doing a great job and is keeping a good program going. So congratulations also to the Lumberjack Girls Tennis Team and to look forward to what will be a good spring season for the boys. Also, I am eager to see some of the enhanced security measures start to take place in the district. I'm looking forward to when we can talk about, you know, specific things that are happening at specific schools. And so as that information becomes prepared, Jeremy, I'll be looking forward to hearing about it myself. That's, that's a really, really big thing for me. So I hope to hear more soon. I'm excited about Career Academies. You know, terrific presentation tonight. That's, that's been a great program in this school district for many years. And it seems that more and more people are becoming aware of just how good it is. So a really exciting program that seems to only get better. With regards to the election, it's going to be interesting. They always are. I hope to still be here, even though my name is not on the ballot. It is possible to write in candidates. I'll just repeat that one last time. And I guess we're going to see what happens in just a few weeks. Being a broadcaster, I was constrained on being able to file as a legal candidate without opening up the company I have been working for to demands of equal time. So that's why I'm not there. But I sure like being here. And if I'm not here after the end of this year, then I will hope to continue to work with the district in whatever way I can to try to to make things better.
Holly, welcome aboard. It's great to have a student voice as a part of this, part of this board. I think that 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 voice is an important one that we need to hear. We said, we, we, we hear lots of information from lots of different people. But when we actually hear from the kids and from the students' perspective, I think that brings something different. So thank you for being here and taking the time. I also want to mention the election. Local elections are important. Do your research, make your votes. That's all I have.
All right. Well, it's been a busy month since we got together. I have had several Zoom meetings with MSBA, which is our Minnesota School Board Association, getting together with other board members across the state. And then other meetings are just specifically, excuse me, for board chairs. So we are discussing things, everything from strategic planning, which is required for districts. MSBA can provide a facilitator for us. So when we start talking about that in the months ahead, we'll make that determination as to exactly how, which direction we would like to go. Discussion on solar panels and learning recovery and student behavior, student-based grading, and of course, the elections. Other topics, we're talking about how correspondence is handled, reminding all of us that a school board is a team. It's a team effort. No one person on a school board makes decisions. We do it as a team. MSBA provides for new school board members, phases one and two right away. So those are required. Very important to attend to get up to speed on exactly what it is, what the duties are and what is expected of being on the school board. Tomorrow, I have another Zoom meeting at 8:00 a.m. So I'm keeping busy with those as board chair. The next thing that we're preparing for is our annual audit. And I'd like to give a thank you to Ms. Fenner and her team for all of their efforts. Each year, Bemidji School District has had a very positive outcome from our audits. And that has to do with the financial leadership that we have. And so I want to thank her for that. And her financial expertise is valued and appreciated. I completed the necessary form that I needed to and returned it to our accountant. So I wanted to have Ms. Fenner just share just briefly a little bit about what our budget would look like if we were fully funded, especially for our two unfunded mandates that we talk about so much at our district, special ed and transportation sparsity. So if you could just share a few thoughts, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. And thank you very much for the kind words of support for my office. I have an excellent team. And we're, we're proud of the work that we do for the district. So we throw around the term cross subsidy quite often. And what that means is that the cost to run a program exceeds the revenue that that program receives. So we here in Bemidji have cross subsidies in both special education and transportation. So the most recent cross subsidy report, which is available on the Minnesota Department of Education website, shows that Bemidji had a cross subsidy in special ed. So we had unfunded special ed costs of just short of $3.2 million. And that was in the 2021 school year, but that is the most recent report. This means that $3.2 million of our general education funding is required to cover the unfunded portion of that required or mandated special education service. So then if we look at transportation and with increased fuel costs, we are projecting an unfunded, underfunded transportation cost of $1.8 million in the current school year. So if I add those two numbers together, the 3.2 million of unfunded special education costs and the 1.8 million of unfunded transportation costs, that comes to $5 million worth of costs that exceed the revenue provided by the state, yet we are required to provide these services. To drive the point home, I dug a little further and I want to point out that our current budget would be showing a $5.2 million deficit if not for the SER funding. So there's two important things here. Number one is if the state fully funded these two programs that they require us to provide, the Bemidji School District would basically have a balanced budget and we would not be in the financial situation that we're in. And then the second important thing to note is that the SER funds, which are the federal COVID-related funds, those continue to be used to offset the losses, both in the current year and next school year. So when I say offset losses, what I mean is that these funds are being used to keep our staff employed and avoid layoffs during a time when our student needs are the highest and our enrollment, which drives our revenue, is the lowest. And that was clear in Superintendent Olson's class size report. When we talked about the low class sizes at the K three level, that's what that SER funding is doing for us. But those funds, the SER funding expires and is required to be spent at the end of the 2324 school year, which is why it's so important, back to your point, Sarah, to continue to advocate for full funding of our special education and our transportation at that state legislative level because that's not something we have control of here at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you. So that leads right into my next item. And that is to say that Bemidji Day at the Capitol is beginning preliminary discussion. And that will be start next month. I'm on the Public Affairs Committee for the Bemidji Area Chamber, and so I'm very much a part of planning that event. And one of the things, of course, that we do is we plot or put on our plaid vests and we head down to the Capitol. And we bring our message. And this is something that the school district has always had wonderful participation going down to Bemidji Day at the Capitol. And it's the opportunity to again, share our, our concerns and to have a voice. So I will be bringing up, bringing you more information again when a date is set and exactly what our plan will be for that day. So I'll, I'll keep you informed on that. Just wanted to share on a personal level because some of you were aware that one of my summer weekend commitments was serving as music director and accompanist for a condensed version of the musical Oklahoma for the Ferguson Falls Veterans Home. And one of my classmates is the activities director there and kind of said, Carol, come, let's, let's do this. Let's collaborate. So we gave the performances over the weekend and it was truly an honor to work with these veterans who have served our country. So now I'm on to accompanying the Wizard of Oz for community theater. So always, always busy. Last thing to mention is that the Bemidji 31 Education Foundation grant period closes on Friday. And we are seeing the applications come in, which is very exciting. Anne and I both serve on that committee as founding members. And on Wednesday, we have the dine to donate program that's going to be happening at Applebee's. So they have opened their restaurant to Wednesday now, Wednesday, excuse me, October 19th. And 15% of the proceeds that they take in on Wednesday will go to our Bemidji 31 Education Foundation. So again, a big thank you to another business who is so supporting Bemidji education. And we're very, very thankful for that. Final thought, your journey is not the same as mine. My journey is not yours. But if we meet on a certain path, may we encourage each other. Next item on our agenda is public participation. And I don't believe we had anyone who was part of that this evening. So motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.